Good morning, Chairman. We are now live.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. It feels weird sitting in this seat. I do apologise. Bear with me, first time in the big chair. So, good morning to members, officers and members of the public attending this formal meeting of the Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee, or watching live through the County Council's website. My name is councillor Martin Griggs and I am chairman of this committee for this meeting only. The audiovisual feed of this formal public meeting is being broadcast via the County Council's website and a warm welcome to members of the public watching live today. I would like to begin with a health and safety announcement. There is no fire drill plan this morning and in the event of the fire alarm sounding, we will need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors and leave the building into reception to the front car park. They need to wait in the car park for further instructions. Before we move on with the main business of the meeting, can I remind everyone to ensure mobiles, laptops and iPads are on silent. Requests to speak will be collated by the scrutiny officer Kiara, Officer Rava Kiara, and we will now move on to the formal agenda. So, do we have any apologies for absence?
Thank you, Chairman. We have apologies from councillor Carrington and councillor Wootton and councillor Clark will be replacing councillor Kelly for this meeting only. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome councillor Clark. Hope you enjoy the meeting. Declarations of members' interests. Do we have any members wishing to declare any interests that's not been declared previously on the procurnary interest form? Okay, so minutes of the previous meeting of the Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee held on the 12th of April 2022. This items to approve and sign the minutes of the meeting as a correct record of the last meeting. I'll do what the old chairman did and we'll go through them page by page. So, the minutes start on page six, page seven, page eight, page nine, page 10. Do I have a proposer for the minutes? Thank you very much. And I'm assuming the other one of you is happy to second that. Okay, so we'll now move to the vote. You're voting on whether you agree the minutes are a correct record. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Those against and any abstentions. Thank you. Those minutes are agreed as a correct and accurate record. So, we'll now move on to announcements by the chairman, executive councillors and lead officers. I'd like to begin...
Thank you.
Sorry, who?
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Davy here remotely.
Yeah, bear with me two seconds councillor Davy and I'll let you come in. So, I'd like to begin by thanking councillor Ray Wootton for his excellent chairmanship during this council term. I found him to be a very great chairman, very knowledgeable. Councillor Wootton displayed an inquisitive, keen attention to detail and tenacity in his leadership and I'm pleased to confirm that he'll remain a dedicated member of this committee and continue to support us maintaining the high standards that he helped set over the past years. Councillor Ian Carrington will be picking up the baton going forward and despite his unavailability to attend today, I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate him on his appointment to steering, to the steering wheel of this committee. Moreover, I'd like to thank David Hickman, head of environmental services, as a farewell as he leaves the council at the end of the month. I'm sure I echo all members of the committee in the acknowledgement of his excellent contributions over the past decade and saying that you'll be missed by all. Chris Miller, deputy head of environment, will now be assuming full responsibilities and continue his valued support to this committee. Moving on, we have a lighter agenda this morning and I would like to ask officers to only summarise key points for their reports and what is required by the committee and also to stress to members the importance of succinct questions and concise contributions. Now on to executive councillors.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Firstly, I would like to echo your thoughts about our outgoing chairman councillor Wootton, who as you know has had to stand down from the role of chair because of some health issues at the moment. He's been an excellent chairman over the last 12 months. He's led the committee, I think, exceptionally well and I shall miss his daily contribution to the work of the portfolio. I obviously welcome Ian as the new chairman. I look forward to him being in the chair at the next meeting and obviously to you councillor Griggs, my continued thanks for your role as vice chairman of this committee. I echo your comments regarding David Hickman, who's been an exceptional officer for the county council. He's worked very closely with me on the environment agenda for a long time now. I will miss him personally but we will not be losing him to the work of the wider water world in Lincolnshire. He'll still be involved and I look forward to meeting him in his new roles and congratulate Chris on assuming those new duties. We obviously are living in very challenging times. The economic picture remains very challenging for many of our businesses and many of our communities. We have a record low unemployment rate and yet we know that the cost of living crisis means that life is too difficult for very many hardworking families. Our businesses who have invested and innovated and held their nerve and pushed through the pandemic will now need to use all of that tenacity to address the inflationary pressures ahead in the next year or so. We do know how resilient and creative our sectors can be and I'm very pleased to say that many of our sectors are obviously going to be critical to the nation's recovery, food, defence, care, and I am certain that those sectors will grow and thrive and our offices and this authority will continue to create an environment where we can support them on a daily basis. So, today I'm pleased to be able to share news of the progress that we are making on a range of projects and share some highlights for our work with the business community. On Friday, over 100 manufacturing businesses enjoyed an inspirational programme at the Greater Lincolnshire Manufacturing Conference, where they learnt how to make their organisations more sustainable to achieve net zero. The conference showcased industry leaders such as Siemens and the Advanced Manufacturing Research Centre. Discussions included the practicalities of carbon capture and storage, sustainability in the supply chain, as well as providing insights into taking the first steps towards becoming net zero. The day concluded with industry insight tours from local manufacturers Micron Clean and the Wolves Manufacturing Services, who offered delegates the opportunity to explore their onsite facilities and share advice on sustainable business practices. Of course, our wonderful growing Lincolnshire businesses are always in need of well-trained new recruits. Many of our businesses are telling us that they are struggling very hard to fill vacancies with qualified people. We want our county to offer highly skilled and trained employees and in return, they must have a range of good quality and well-paid job opportunities. Apprenticeships are fast becoming the route of choice, not just for individuals but also for our businesses because of the tailored approach they offer. So, I was delighted that the achievements of Lincolnshire apprentices, trainers and employers were recognised at an awards ceremony in Lincoln last week with winners across eight categories. As well as celebrating their success, the event was also a great platform to showcase a range of opportunities on offer and the benefit they bring to businesses and organisations. Apprenticeships are a real priority for us across Greater Lincolnshire as we aspire to grow our own talent in our key employment sectors and work hard to retain that knowledge and those skills. Another area where we've been supporting Lincolnshire businesses around accessing county council contracts. We've been continuing with our drive to encourage local procurement and Lincolnshire County Council delivered procurement workshops at both the Lincoln Property and Business Investment Expo in April and the Business Expo which is taking place at the showground today. We want to encourage local firms to win contracts with the council and build lasting relationships with local suppliers. Our workshops are helping to demystify the LCC procurement process and have taken a forward look at how things are changing for the better and this is all down to the reforms in public sector procurement. I'm also very pleased to be able to give you an update on the construction of the council's new business and innovation centre at the South Lincolnshire Food Enterprise Zone, commonly called the Hub. Following extensive efforts by all parties working in the face of grave international supply chain volatility and the impact of Covid-19, the construction of the Hub building will be completed some five weeks ahead of schedule at the end of May. Power commissioning work is scheduled to be completed in early July and at that point, we can take ownership of the building. We're holding a soft launch event for the Hub on the 20th of July and a joint formal launch for the whole South Lincolnshire Food Enterprise Zone with the University of Lincoln and the Greater Lincolnshire Local Enterprise Partnership is now scheduled for the 22nd of September. And finally, I'll leave you with an opportunity for all of our local pubs, who we know will be struggling over the next few months. Business Lincolnshire has launched the pub diversification programme, which is a small pilot programme with 20 places. The scheme is open to any pub in the Greater Lincolnshire Lepp area and will offer advisory support to pub owners to help them with any type of diversification project that they may be considering. Potential improvements could include creating overnight accommodation, retail services, additional facilities for walkers and cyclists, motorhome hookup points in the car park, electric vehicle charging points, et cetera. Any scheme that provides a new income stream for the pub that will make the business more resilient and help to safeguard these vital community assets. Any pub owners interested in finding out more can see the details of the scheme on the Business Lincolnshire website. At that point, Chairman, I'll wrap up and be happy to take any questions from any members of the committee that they wish to raise with me.
I believe councillor Baxter was first.
Thank you, Chairman, and welcome to the big chair. I'd like to ask, on the theme of apprenticeships and local procurement, do we know how many apprentices are employed directly by Lincolnshire County Council and if possible, in which fields? And secondly, in terms of local procurement, do we have any metrics, do we have any measures of how much of our procurement comes from local suppliers? Thank you.
We certainly do councillor Baxter. I can't give them to you this second but I promise to make sure. I'll send you an email with some data on that. But I can tell you that over the last few years, procurement has been much greater resourced in the Lincolnshire area. So, much more of our contracting is done through Lincolnshire suppliers. And certainly in terms of apprenticeships, I am very proud of the fact that we have dozens of young people working within the county council, who are now becoming our full-time staff. They've come in straight from university and been apprenticeships to us and I'm very proud of that fact. But I'll happily send you an email with a detail on those two points.
Happy with that. Thank you very much. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and thank you councillor Davy for that update. Particularly interested in that last comment you made regarding securing and safeguarding local pubs. Be interesting to see some future data on this and how the project is working and if it's successful or not, because as we know on the paper today, we have a report regarding car journeys and emissions and there's a connection between that and car journeys made in rural areas in particular compared with urban areas. So, if those rural pubs can be secured, that will secure that, hopefully that village community and also reduce the pressure on some of our roads. So, interesting initiative and hopefully we can have some update in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for that councillor Taylor. Yes, of course, we'll keep you updated. I think we all understand that with what's coming down the track in terms of the economy, the pressure is going to be on, not on people going into unemployment, but people who are going to struggle to live on the money they're earning from their jobs. And what happens in this kind of recession will be that discretionary spend, which is everything from holidays to going out, a trip down the pub, will be reined in by our residents. So, keeping our pubs vital and part of our communities is critical work. And as you know, if we lose our pubs, it also changes the sustainability of a local community. So, these local villages that probably have a pub and a church in a village hall, if they lose one of their key assets, will no longer have any claim to be a sustainable community and that affects how we deal with planning across the wider Greater Lincolnshire area. I'll keep the committee updated on what we see in terms of pubs because I think they're a bellwether indicator for what's going on at a very local level. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Councillor Spratt, did you indicate or were you just?
I didn't, but I will ask a question. I was about to actually. Can I thank councillor Davy for the excellence of his report? I can't see him now. But councillor Davy, you mentioned the cost of living. Would you accept from me that there was an inevitability, after the government pumped 400-plus billion pounds into the economy to keep it afloat during Covid-19, that there's an inevitability with that amount of money in the system that there would be a cost of living crisis in terms of increased inflation? And that for me to agree with you to say that a lot of the problems are issues, as you rightly indicated, issues of supply not keeping up with demand. And would you also accept from me that the way the county council has operated over the last couple of years, particularly, well over the, far longer of course, but particularly over the last couple of years during this crisis, that local intervention in the economy from the county council demonstrates on a rather smaller scale what could be done on a greater scale if we had greater devolved powers for the county council? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Spratt for those comments. I am violently going to agree with you on all of those issues. I'll just say this, you're absolutely right. We had to get through Covid and the government had to do what they had to do. But the printing of money is going to lead to some very, very serious repercussions going down the track. And what we're about to go into with the economy is going to be worsened as America has to also now deal with its spiralling, out-of-control debt burdens. So, that's perhaps going to prolong the pain globally for all of us in terms of economies rebalancing after Covid. You know, and I think it's interesting to note that our country has inflation officially at 9%, I suspect probably around 14%. Switzerland, that didn't print any money, has inflation at 2.47%. So, you know, we recognise the challenges. We had to get through Covid. The government did everything they could, recognising the circumstances we were in. But there is a price to pay for that and sadly, we're about to pay it. And so are all our residents. In terms of our local interventions, you're absolutely right. You know, that £12 million the council allocated to support businesses that had no help has kept those businesses going. And I'm really pleased to see some of the innovation of those businesses now as they try and move forward and put the past behind them. Local intervention is best. Local politicians know best how to deliver the outcomes that our communities need. So, on devolution, it always has had my full support and always will be. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Any more questions before we move on? No, no one's indicating. Thank you very much councillor Davy. So, are there any officer announcement from the lead officers? Justin, Chris? No, thank you very much. Okay, so we will move on to the next item of the agenda, which is the Local Transport Plan 5 Zero Carbon Target. So, this item is on page 11 to 154 of the agenda pack and enables the committee to review how the new Local Transport Plan 5 will assist in meeting the net zero carbon targets that the council has set and actions that the Local Transport Plan will introduce to reduce carbon dioxide emissions. The report will be presented by Jason Cooper, Transport and Growth Manager, and Dan Clayton, Sustainability Manager, who are with us in the chambers. Over to you gentlemen.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, so back in January this year, we presented a report to this committee on the carbon emissions for the whole of the economy in the county council. We looked at all of the sectors. We commissioned a report from a company called Etude and we reported on that on January and we said then that we would come back and give further updates on specific issues around different sources of transport of carbon emissions. And the largest source of carbon dioxide emissions from that consultancy report that we received was from the transport sector. So, 1.445 million tonnes of carbon per annum comes from the transport sector within Lincolnshire. That's just under one-third of the total and it's by far the largest source of carbon dioxide emissions. So, the purpose of today's report is to set that in context and provide some additional detail on the carbon emissions. And then Jason's going to talk about the Local Transport Plan 5 and the action plans that are coming out of that to start to tackle some of these issues. So, what figure one in the report on page 12 shows is that emissions from transport have stayed largely constant over the period that's in the graph, which is from 2005. But actually, when you look further back in the data, this is the case right back to 1990. Transport emissions have remained relatively stable over that period while other sectors of the economy have started to decarbonise as we've moved away from coal-fired power to renewables, nuclear and more gas-fired power stations. So, yeah, so it's kind of identified that it stayed relatively the same. And the reason why is that, first of all, the population of the county has increased over the period since 2005. It's up by almost 100,000 people, so there are more people travelling around. The phenomenon of internet deliveries has increased as well. So, the number of vans on the road has gone up by around about 70% since 2000 because of all the home deliveries that people are getting. And then the average size of the cars on the road has increased as well. So, when you think of how sports utility vehicles have become kind of the most popular type of car that are now purchased. So, all those factors have led to the emissions kind of staying the same because allied to that is that there's been efficiencies in engine design that have reduced emissions, but this has been a source of keeping them up there. And over the period since 2005, transport has gone from being just under a quarter of emissions to over a third of emissions now. So, it's becoming more and more significant in reaching our net zero targets and it's starting to be tackled by national policy. So, on page 13 of the report, I mean, it's almost a statement of the obvious, but rural communities tend to have much higher transport emissions than urban communities. So, when you look at the figures, the average person in the city of Lincoln council area generates 0.62 tonnes of carbon dioxide a year from their transport activity, whereas somebody in more rural East Lindsay generates 1.93 tonnes. And that's because they're having to drive further to access services and, you know, around their local area. So, and when, this is data that's come from the Midlands Connect Transport Organisation, when you look at that in detail, you start to see that there are, it's the length of trip that is the significant factor in the source of transport emissions. So, journeys over 10 miles make up the vast bulk of the carbon dioxide emissions from transport. So, these are the things that we need to start to tackle and the national government policy is starting to do those things. So, you've got things like the proposed restriction on sale of petrol and diesel cars and vans from 2030. And when you start to look at those sort of things, there's also the restriction on HGVs using only diesel from 2040 that's outlined in the government's transport proposals. So, all these policies will start to kind of press down on carbon emissions. And then the other aspect is the switch to electric vehicles. So, that provides a challenge for the county. And when WSP did a report on a EV strategy for Greater Lincolnshire that showed that we need round about 3,400 charging points for the whole of the Greater Lincolnshire area by 2030, and in the table in figure five, we've got the data as it stood at the end of April, that there were currently 257 public charging points within the county. And yeah, so there needs to be significant investment within the EV charging infrastructure because the sales of hybrid and battery cars are taking off significantly. And I think Jason's going to talk more about one of the bids that we've got into to start to increase the amount of EV infrastructure within the county. Yeah, and so, I think that's the main parts from the kind of carbon dioxide emissions side of things. So, now I'll hand over to Jason to talk about the action plan that's in the Local Transport Plan.
Thanks, Dan. Morning, everyone. As I'm sure members are aware, the Local Transport Plan 5 was approved and adopted by full council in January of, sorry, February of this year. And since that point, we've been very much focused on three main work streams looking amongst other things around the decarbonisation issue. The first one, as Dan's mentioned, is around electric vehicle infrastructure charging and the need to improve our level of provision around that. Government in the intervening period has announced a national strategy and linked to that national strategy is a fund of approximately 450 million pounds that they're making available for a bidding process. We are working collectively with Midlands Connect, the southern national transport body, and four other local authorities across the Midlands area to put forward a bid for a pilot scheme for that. We'll be looking to perhaps bid for around about £2 million to be shared out across the area to improve the level of infrastructure charging. There are a number of other issues and other operators we've been speaking to as well, particularly Tesla, to look at what they can do, because I believe their nearest supercharge point is actually in Grantham. But that leaves most of the rest of Lincolnshire without any supercharge points at all. So, we're in conversations with them. So, that's one of the work streams. Another work stream we've looked at, and that forms the bulk of the appendices for this, is around identifying improvements to access to our railway stations, because I'm sure members will be aware that rail travel in particular is less carbon intense than car travel. And as Dan's indicated, those longer distance trips in particular produce high levels of carbon emissions. So, if we can get people to think more about other options and train travel being one of those. But we do know that one of the barriers to train travel is access to stations and the ability to either park at a station or even walk and cycle to it if the right facilities aren't there. So, we've identified a whole series of measures that we might want to think about. The intention is through the area transport strategies and the area transport boards, we'll look at those in more detail. And at the moment, they are merely suggestions for consideration by scrutiny panel. The final work stream that we've been focusing on is around the freight agenda. And again, as Dan highlighted, the very significant number of vans that we've seen, particularly post-pandemic or during the pandemic. But we've also got high levels of HGV movement around the county. We obviously, they need, we need those to support the agri-food sector. But there are ways that, or there are interventions that could take place that would help around the carbon emissions around those as well. Again, we have linked in with Midlands Connect as part of their regional freight strategy to try and work collectively. Because as I'm sure members are aware, the freight industry does not really recognise local authority boundaries. You know, it's an industry that has to move across the nation in many cases. So, there is a lot there within the report itself and we're very much here to listen to what members have to say and to help them shape where we move forwards.
Thank you very much. And councillor Clark.
Thank you, Chairman. Reading the report, it starts off with, this report sets out transport is the largest source of carbon, et cetera. Electric vehicles seems to be focused solely on cars. What about motorbikes? And if aiming for zero-carbon target, how's this going to be affected by air traffic? The last one is the barrier about using trains. As a train user, it's not the station, it's the service or the lack of service. The other week I went to Newark, I got on a train at Lincoln, it was absolutely packed. People were stood up. By the time we got to Newark, that's about another four stations along, the same volume of people were trying to get on the train. That's what's stopping people using trains, the service. It's absolutely rubbish here. If you go down south though, it's completely different. It's a wonderful experience using the train. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Clark. Councillor Spratt.
Councillor Spratt.
I need to indicate.
Communicate. There's a faux pas on our part. I do apologise, councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you for that presentation. I do support this action plan. Clearly a lot of work has taken place and yes, certainly some clearly some progress in this report and also more to do, but good to see this report. We do need to reduce emissions pollution and congestion. Just a couple of comments on rail travel, which was mentioned in the presentation also by councillor Clark. Travelled by train yesterday, it was a good experience. I drove today, so I use roads on the rail network as well. And also, the need to increase freight is often seen as a positive, as it is, it reduces vehicles from the roads. However, in my area, Spalding, great town, great place to live, great, I must wish to support the economy locally. However, with the increase in number of freight trains going through our town in Spalding, ninety in a week, I believe, does cut the town into two, which makes it difficult sometimes. Sometimes emergency services, ambulance and fire service cannot access the other side of town, which is which is actually serious. It's life and death issues at times. So we do, I believe, need to work more with our partners, Network Rail, for investment, whether that's bridges and tunnels to actually because, as you know, a train does stop the traffic and also does put add time to journeys for to the reason to may make it more difficult for businesses to invest. So I do believe there's further work to do there regarding that conversations or pressure lobby on Network Rail to invest. They do make profits, a successful business, to put some of their profits and invest in our infrastructure to make that journey smoother and take the pressure off our roads and also, as referred to, those emergency services. There are some serious issues there. Thank you.
Councillor Fleetwood.
Yes, just picking up on the issue of public transport. Well, I'll go on to electric vehicles in a minute, but I'll start with public transport. And I don't know how many people have travelled abroad on trains, but if you've travelled on UK rail network in comparison with a lot of Europe, I think the UK are travelling on peasant class because the quality of the trains in the UK is particularly poor. If you travel on Eurostar, it's on air suspension, the trains work beautifully. You come back to UK trains up the East Coast Main Main Line, the train rattles around on the the various parts and you come from, dare I say it, from Newark to Lincoln and you rattle along at fifty miles an hour, sixty miles an hour in a in a train that doesn't have potentially a toilet or even a bar even a a canteen type facility. But basically, we are very much in cattle class in comparison. The problem with regard to transportation on trains again is the cost of the fares. And it's the same with the bus network in the UK. The cost of public transport is far, far too high in comparison with, let's say, the rest of Europe and other parts of the world. We seem to pay a premium for public transport here, albeit that some people who are of a certain age do get free passes, but I'm still in the in the area of the world where you pay for your ticket. And, you know, you start adding tickets up. I checked yesterday, I wanted to go to Durham and back on Thursday, and a ticket to Durham and back, the cheapest fare I could find for Thursday this week was seventy pounds, which is ridiculous. I'm not even trying to travel to the big city down south. You know, I'm trying to go the other way. And the cost of that transportation is absolutely ridiculous. Moving on to electric vehicles, yes, cars are an important factor with regard to the network, and we talk in terms of charging points across Lincolnshire, but the report doesn't tell us which ones are high level or low level charging points. There's two levels of efficiency of the charges. And if you look at where we're supposed to be with the government perspective of ten years' time when nobody will be buying a fossil fuel car, and you start to wonder how many people are going to be queuing at these charging points before they even start to charge, there could be half an hour, an hour's wait to even get in line to actually connect to the network. That's assuming the national grid's strong enough to actually cope with the vehicles. And if you look at terraced housing in Lincoln, you drive along the likes of Monks Road and the the streets that go to the north and the south of it with nice long hills attached to them. People are parking on the roadside in terraced housing. Potentially, they will have ten years' time, they'll potentially have electric vehicles. So where will those charging points be for those vehicles? Because you can't have a flex going from a terrace property across a footpath to a vehicle. So how are we actually going to cope with it in that sort of time scale? And indeed, you know, well, then we look at if you've got a street of terraces and let's say a street has thirty thirty houses along it with thirty people trying to charge overnight, how will the grid cope with that? There's a lot of ifs and buts attached to it. I think there's a lot of ground we need to cover yet.
Thank you very much. Before I go to councillor Spratt, and I'm I'm going to jump in, councillor Fleetwood and councillor Clark stole a lot of the major points I wanted to touch on. I I have used trains in Europe, both in France and not on the main lines, and also in parts of Eastern Europe, and the service is significantly better and fantastically cheaper. I like to take the kids out on days out via train, but sometimes it is just too cost prohibitive. It's far cheaper to load everyone into the car and drive there directly. Not only that, but in Boston, we have the Skegness Nottingham line and that's it. So if you don't want to go to Skegness or Nottingham, you're kind of inhibited by the fact you go, okay, I've got to take several small children, sit on a train platform at the change for fifty minutes, and you might have to do that twice. All of a sudden, you start going, well, it's a day's travel time to get three hours down the road, which is inconvenient. And and again, the same with the buses. I mean, I'm I'm not sure what it's like across the rest of the county, but the struggle to recruit drivers for buses at the minute is really impeding some of our public our bus companies to be able to supply regular services. You know, the Intertown Bus Service has pretty much not been scrapped because luckily the county council came in and sort of bailed it out. But private industry is really struggling to maintain these services. It's all well and good trying to push everyone onto a network that doesn't exist, but if it doesn't exist, that's, you know, not going to reduce the amount people use. Again, electric charging, where I work at Boston College, and last week, they sent a thing around saying, oh, yeah, you can do a salary sacrifice scheme to get an electric vehicle. And and a few of my colleagues looked into it and got told we weren't allowed to use the charging pointers at the college. And obviously, if you don't have an electric charging point at home, that then becomes inconvenient because you've got a car that you can't charge anywhere you are for a long period of time. I appreciate that the government's banning sale of petrol vehicles by twenty thirty, but I think, you know, the fact we've got six per cent of the charging points estimated we require, you know, we there is a lot of work to do. And I I genuinely think that coupled with the price of electric points that councillor Fleetwood raised, I can't see it going as well as we all like to think it will. I mean, I hope it does. Obviously, the environment's really important, but I feel, you know, without central government giving P more money at a local level so that the county and the districts who know what the issues are and can tackle the exact direct issues, I think we're really going to struggle to implement it. That being said, I do like the report and I think it's very well written, and I shall go to councillor Spratt now.
Thank you. Can I say this is the first of two very excellent reports? That's me, I'm sorry. Two very excellent reports this morning. I listened to a speech about two years ago from somebody who was very passionate from the Green Lobby, talking about everything from why I shouldn't eat beef to why I shouldn't drive a car. And I do sometimes wonder, no colleagues here, of course, but sometimes wonder that some of the people in the Green Lobby, like Extinction Rebellion and such like, I think put the case back a number of years. The thing is, you can't disinvent the car. The car's here, it's here to stay, it's a reality. And I I've just bought a new car, it's a hybrid, I'm not going to apologise for that. But electric cars, one of the big issues with them, of course, is cost and the distance you can travel without recharging. But and charging points, and I do agree with you, chairman, I think there needs to be significant investment on charging points. As for the bit about cables, we've got an electric car in our house and we've got a driveway, so it's okay. And as my friend councillor Fleetwood said, number of streets, for example, at Monks Road, are you going to have charging wires all over the street? Well, I don't think you are. I think what will happen eventually is that as petrol stations and diesel stations reduce, there will be recharging stations with fifty and sixty charging points. I mean, people don't put petrol in the car and diesel in the cars at home, do they? So when they get cars, if they haven't got their own charging point, they'll go to these electric charging stations. The thing is as well, though, the government, and let's let's not deceive ourselves here, the government are not going to miss a trick, because the government at some point, when we've all gone electric, are going to start to say, wait a minute, we've got thirty five billion pounds coming in in diesel and fuel duty car tax. It's going to cause a black hole in the exchequer. And and you think we've got, you know, that would be a massive shock if it happened all at once. And I can see that the government are either going to tax people at public charging points, so there'll be a charge, or there's going to have to be some way to get that money back. And one of the things is through the MOT and such like. You take your car for MOT every year, or indeed every two years, as they're talking about at the moment, and and they tell you how much tax you've you've got to pay. Like my friend over there, councillor Clark, I'm a train user, and the Lincoln to Newark is line really is appalling at some points. And coming back from the Nottingham Christmas market when trains were running, one carriage on a Saturday evening. I mean, absolutely ludicrous, and you can't blame the government for that, Mr Chairman. So it's ludicrous. I do like public transport. We go down to London quite a bit, travel by train. As my friends know, we're booked to go to on holiday soon, travelling from Heathrow, and we've booked trains to go down to Heathrow. Quite cheap, relatively speaking, not complaining. But tomorrow, they're about to announce a series of national rail strikes. And I'm starting to regret now the fact that we bought train tickets and I wished I'd gone down, driven down and parked at the hotel, because we'd have got free parking there anyway. So the public, the 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 reliability of trains in terms of management, putting trains on, I think is a really important point. But I think the public want to ensure that those trains are reliable. You know, if you book and pay to go on holiday on a train and you suddenly find that the rail network's on strike for a day, I'm not saying they haven't got justifiable cause, but it's one hell of an inconvenience. And people like me will start to say, damn the trains, we're going in the car. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much. Any more speakers? Councillor Baxter.
Thank you, chairman, and thank you, colleagues, for the interesting debate so far. I'm not sure who we're speaking to, though. We can we can make comments to officers, we can talk about the state of the national railways and and the buses and the and the roads and everything else, but but as far as we are able within the terms of Lincolnshire County Council, I'm not sure how much power we have over these things. The first item on the recommendations was to talk about the methodology. I did have a couple of questions about the methodology of the report in terms of measuring emissions from vehicular transport. And that includes, so the A1, if a car drives from Peterborough up to York and goes through Lincolnshire most of the way, are those emissions included? And then there's cross border things. If if I drive from Deepings St James to Peterborough and make a twenty mile round trip, is is that a trip of half a half a mile in Lincolnshire or is it a twenty mile Lincolnshire trip? I I don't know. I don't know the methodology. And equally, if I drive if I drive to Durham, is is that a long Lincolnshire trip or or is it a long Lincolnshire trip and then a long Yorkshire Northumberland trip? So I wanted to understand the methodology. But then going on to the the reasons why we are in the state we're in and the reasons why people are literally protesting in the street about the state we're in, if it's if it councillor through you, chair, but councillor Spratt, if if you don't like the recommendations that that people are making to you from Extinction Rebellion or the the Green Lobby or or the other causes, if if you don't want to give up eating beef, and I I'm not a vegetarian, I eat beef myself, but I realise that it does have an impact on the planet, and so does driving the car, and so does turning the heating on and and so on, then then what is the answer? Because I'm convinced it isn't the free market. And you talked about the 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 trains and you said you can't blame the government for the way the trains are run. Well, who is it? It is the free market. And so the free market does need regulating and and does need running properly. Going on about trains, I noticed we've got two appendices in this agenda about, or maybe three, about access to stations. Are you inviting comment on those consultancy reports first? Because I have to admit, I I haven't been into so much detail with them, partly because I don't really live in the areas where they are. If I wanted to go to Grantham on the train, I would first need to drive to Peterborough. If I want to go to Lincoln on the train, as I have this morning, do I get a badge for being the sustainable transport person? I had to I have to make a twenty mile round trip to get to Spalding in the first place. And, I mean, it it is a good service and I I don't occasionally it's going to wobble, but in terms of me getting to county council meetings from Spalding, it's been very good so far. My only grumble would be with the timings of the meetings, which I have raised with the the previous chair. If the meetings were set back a quarter of an hour, then a lot of people could get on the a lot of councillors could get on the same train that I do, but it seems to require an act of parliament to change the the timings of these meetings in order that that I don't have to dash in, dash to the loo, dash to my seat before before we kick off. And I thank you, chair, for for making allowance for me to get to my seat this morning. So as for rail infrastructure, I welcome any improvements to rail infrastructure in Skegness, in 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 Lincoln, Grantham, Market Raisin, wherever. But we also need new rail infrastructure. And I'd like to ask the officers, is if there is any anywhere on the horizon, the 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 prospect of new railway stations, for example, in Deepings St James or Deepings St Nicholas, so that people in the Deepings have to go less far to get to the the train in the first place? And also, infrastructure like the Bridget Talington, whether it's part of the wider bypass scheme, I don't I don't mind. But one of the biggest issues in in my division is the Talington crossing, which is one of the few remaining level crossings on the East Coast Main Line. But it's not just about trains. As we know, it's about buses, and buses are dreadful, too. Getting if you're on a school bus, they are fairly reliable, and I take my hat off to the the operators and drivers such as Delaney that that get my daughter to school in the morning. But if you want to go anywhere from the Deepings after eight o'clock at night and you haven't got a car, then then tough luck, really, unless you can afford a taxi. You can't, if I get a train, as I did the other night, from London to Peterborough, arriving at quarter past eight, there's no bus back to the Deepings. And we're not talking about a tiny hamlet, this is a population serving twelve of twelve thousand people or more. The the, sorry, I've got a little bit more. Part of the problem is is flights. Air air transport is not covered in this this report at all, but air transport gets a massive subsidy because they don't pay tax on their fuel, like I do in my car. And again, it's not a county council issue. But there is some good news. I welcome the cycle infrastructure progress that we've had at my end of the county from Phil Watt and his colleagues in our Lincolnshire Highways Department, and that seems to be good progress, ready for any government money that comes down from Whitehall to Lincolnshire, ready to spend. And I really hope that money emerges soon. The shift to electric is not going to solve all the problems. And a lot of this report that we've been given is talking about how to get people to electric. So we're we're saying we don't want gas boilers in our houses, we want electric heat pumps. We don't want petrol-driven cars, we want electric cars. And as councillor Fleetwood points out, that is going to cause some issues with the grid. And unless we find other ways of feeding the grid, whether it's solar panels or or carbon capture and new methods of generating electricity, we are in trouble. And that's why Extinction Rebellion and others are making such a song and dance about it, because we can see this crisis is coming, it's almost here, and we are dilly-dallying about with it. I did notice one line in the report which said to, it's at the end of paragraph four, to encourage and support modal shift from road to rail and water. I would love to hear from officers how we're going to get anything from the road on to water as a method of transport in Lincolnshire, realistically. So yes, it all ties together. Part of it's a problem with the free market, part of it's a problem with individual, individuals' choices, choosing cars. And the reason for a lot of that is that our public transport system is so rubbish. Thank you, Chairman, for bearing with me.
No problem. Just before I go to councillor Spratt, just in terms of buses, I was looking at my students the other day. I believe the last bus from Boston to Spalding is at seven o'clock at night. There used to be one at nine, but evidently they've cancelled that since I moved into town. And also, my understanding of the grid, and I'm sure the officers will correct me when I let them come back after members have finished, is that at least in the Boston area, my understanding is the grid wouldn't be able to cope with the demand on it regardless, and nor does it have the input capacity. So it's all well and good, people, you know, transferring to electric, but unless there is massive infrastructure spends, you know, the grid can't even cope with the amount of energy that, you know, we'd use if we had an extra big factory, in my neck of the woods, let alone if, you know, the entire population are trying to charge a car up when they get home from work. Councillor Spratt, back to you.
Yeah, just a couple of points. I didn't bring a point of order up, but councillor Baxter did mention something that I said, he was on about the free market. I did specifically agree with your comment on government intervention, if I might say. And the thought that councillor Clark and I were talking about, when councillor Baxter said it was the government's fault, I said it wasn't the government's fault. And he talked about the free market not having more than one carriage at a particular time. It's nothing to do with the government, it's a failure in management because they failed to realise what the demand was at an obvious time, and put an extra carriage on, which was ridiculous. I'm not saying what you said was ridiculous, but it was. And the other thing was about flights, and during the same speech, and it was, the speech I referred to was actually at this committee, when, I can't, oh, what was her name, when councillor Bokeit was Chair, and they were on about the flights and such like. I know that's not directly relevant to this report, but this report is a really fundamental report, talking about emissions and various other things. And one of the ideas is to tax flights, and to increase tax on flights. Well, the fact of the matter is, people who are rich can afford to pay, and your ordinary working class people who goes to Benidorm maybe once a year, or twice a year, or Mallorca, they're going to be the ones who suffer. And nobody's going to do that for political reasons, whether it's right or not. And of course, you've got all these millionaires in Davos at the moment, saying what's wrong with the world? Well, they've all flown there, and lots of them on private jets, haven't they? They can afford to. So the other point that councillor Baxter made is quite a powerful point. I think, to be fair, there's no perfect answer to this. It's a combination of markets, government intervention, and a lot of goodwill by a lot of people, I would suggest. But I think this is an excellent report, Chairman, and if there's no further debate after I've spoken, I'll move that we accept it and thank the officers for the very thoroughness of it, and I hope you didn't mind us getting into a slightly wider debate than perhaps you wanted, but it is a really important issue.
Thank you very much, councillor Spratt. I will accept your proposal. Just before I second it, I'd like to see if the officers would like to come back and address any questions members raised.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I think as an action, we did ask for consideration and comment, and I feel we got that today very thoroughly, so thank you. Just to pick up on a few of the points I've noted, councillor Clark, yes, electric motorcycles is something that isn't referenced in this report, but it is certainly alongside many other things that we haven't referenced in this report. We've just picked three of the major work streams we're working on at the moment, so we haven't covered walking and cycling in here particularly. I mean, that is obviously a major issue, and we haven't really touched on the bus network either, although I know the debate did cover that as well. So there are plenty of other issues, and I think we will be bringing a report back to cover some of those at a point in the future. Regarding air, yes, we very specifically haven't referenced air because, as councillor Baxter says, as a local authority, we have almost, well, we have no control whatsoever over air, so actually, there is very little to discuss around that, because there is very little we could do to deal with that. In terms of, there was a lot of discussion around rail. The good news is, Network Rail have set about a major piece of study work to look at the whole of the Greater Lincolnshire rail network, that will be looking at new infrastructure, so new stations. I've also raised the point, because it has been raised with me on a number of occasions, the issue around severance particularly, where level crossing gates are down for long periods of the day. So that, I have asked them to specifically look at that as part of this wider work, because I do know what an issue it is for major parts of the authority. In terms of the actual way the rail industry is operated, as I'm sure members are aware, the franchise system that had been set up in the mid nineteen nineties has now kind of basically been removed. Great British Rail are a new organisation who are going to take over the responsibilities of partly the DFT, partly Network Rail, and partly some of the operators. And we are likely to see some very significant changes in the way the rail industry is run and operated moving forward, hopefully for the better, because yes, I'm well aware that in some places it couldn't actually get much worse. I think that covers most of the major points raised. I don't know, Dan, if you had anything else you could add.
Yeah, I just wanted to say on the methodology for the A roads and the minor roads, so the way it works is that they take Department for Transport data on traffic levels on motorways, A roads and minor roads, and then extrapolate that. So a journey kind of crossing county boundaries would be accounted for in that, but it is a kind of extrapolation from, you know, background data on a number of road vehicles. And I was going to mention on the air travel as well, obviously it's not in the county council area, but in Greater Lincolnshire, we've got the plant on the south bank of the Humber that is manufacturing low carbon and zero carbon and aviation fuel, and I think they're planning to do kind of test flights on those in the next few months. So they are starting to tackle those issues.
Councillor Baxter, you look perplexed.
Yes, I am perplexed. I'll probably pick it up outside, but you seem to be saying that if we blocked the A1 for a couple of weeks and made all the cars go around into Nottinghamshire, then that would be better for our county's emissions, which sounds counterintuitive, tempting but counterintuitive. The other one I hoped that someone would come back to was the idea of shifting freight from road to rail and water.
Yes, again, a bit like air, there is limited things we can do, but the trend is navigable for a certain length of its run up to Gainsborough, and obviously the ports at Boston and Suttonbridge are areas where we were trying to promote. It's an issue around shortening of supply chains or changing supply chains so that they're operated by more sustainable modes. So as you'll be aware, some freight is brought in by air, there are opportunities potentially for some of that to be shifted to move by water, by boat, rather than coming in by air. So it's just looking at those opportunities.
Thank you very much. Okay, so no one else has indicated speak, so we've had a proposal from councillor Spratt. And I happy to second from the Chair. All those in favour with the recommendation, please show. That looks to be unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move on to the Greater Lincolnshire Internationalisation Strategy in Action Plan twenty-two to twenty-four. I am mindful we're about twelve minutes over the predicted time at the moment, so I'll try and keep this one a bit more reined into the actual brief, I do apologise. So this item is on page one fifty-five to two hundred and fourteen of the Agenda Pack, and invites us to consider the work undertaken to date to develop the draft Greater Lincolnshire Internationalisation Strategy in Accompanying Action Plan. The report will be presented by Justin Brown, Assistant Director of Growth, Samantha Harrison, Senior Performance Officer, with the kind support of Simon Murphy, Senior Project Officer for Growth, all of whom are with us in the chamber.
Chairman, thank you. So I will speak for about thirty seconds and then hand over to Samantha. It's a different Samantha Harrison to the one in your briefing note, this is our Head of Economic Development, Samantha Harrison. So you'll remember from when we've spoken about export and international trade previously, that exporting businesses, importing businesses are really crucial to our economy. They are the businesses that invest most in innovation, in training, in new plant. And therefore, we believe it's important to support them and help them to grow. Now, in terms of that level of support, it's partly what we can do, but it is also primarily what the Department for International Trade can do, Chamber of Commerce can do, et cetera. And so the strategy, which is the very lengthy document that is attached to this report, is not a county council strategy, it's a strategy of a series of partners. And what we're hoping to be able to do during this discussion this morning is to talk about the role that the county council can play in delivering against that strategy. And councillor Davey has already used the words, we will facilitate the private sector, we will provide them with the environment for growth. And I guess what we would hope you can give us some advice and support on is that level of facilitation, that level of providing environment, as opposed to us intervening and really directing business, we see that what we're about is enabling. So that's the sort of summary of why the report is here. And now if I hand over to Samantha to dance through the report, and then hopefully we can have a conversation.
Thank you, thank you, Justin, and thank you, Chairman. So I'd just like to inform the committee, over the last seven years, the Business Lincolnshire Growth has been instrumental in supporting our exporting businesses, and we have actually ramped up that activity over the last three to four years. We recognise, due to the number of micro businesses that we have in Lincolnshire, we have employed a small business adviser who will look after those businesses and encourage them to undertake export opportunities, be it through trading online, getting them experience so that they can then progress further into full international trade activities. We have also commissioned an organisation called the Export Department, and they have been providing handholding support for our businesses on a one-to-one basis. They've also provided an export manager programme, where we parachute in somebody from that team, and they work alongside the business, up to thirty hours of support, and they will actually help them research opportunities, develop an international trade plan, look at trade documentation, and really take the fear out of how you embrace an export strategy and help the business gain those skills to move forward. And the final thing that we have done is we've got international trade clinics, so we get businesses together so they can learn from each other, share intelligent expertise, and guide each other through the process. However, as Justin mentioned, the landscape is very challenging, and there's still more we can do, and there's, in terms of the number of exporters, in two thousand and nineteen, the government statistics said that we had two thousand two hundred exporters, and we know that that figure can be increased quite dramatically. There are a number of resources out there. The Department of International Trade has a fantastic website and a resource base through great.gov.uk. And in terms of that, there are fact sheets, there are international trade guides, there's some market research and market implementation support. And also, they have access to specialists, so we can bring on specialists for particular sectors, food and drink, advanced manufacturing, et cetera. We work closely within Lincolnshire Chamber of Commerce, and they have an international trade hub, and they're instrumental in supporting our businesses through all their international trade documentation. And then we work closely with the University of Lincoln, with their trade connections, their international focus in certain countries, but also with their alumni, working with them to develop trade champions, and also with students to help gain that cultural knowledge and language support. So we recognise that by working together, there is a real opportunity for our businesses to actually make that next step and embrace what they're doing, but also for our existing businesses to do more in terms of trade. Now, the challenges that we have mainly come about, the businesses think that there's a high cost to trade in terms of the barriers to entry, in terms of the processing, the VAT restrictions, et cetera. There's also time challenges in terms of have they got anybody that is able to support them to do it? It's usually the chief executive or MD, and they're pressured elsewhere, but also perceived lack of demand of their services. So in terms of our plan, what we're trying to do is really to support, provide a holistic programme of actions where we all work in concert together. So all of the organisations who provide trade support, we will focus them in one single gateway comprising of all trade support, and we will use the Business Lincolnshire website as our portal for Lincolnshire. So in terms of that, we'll work together, and I'll pick out a few actions. There's eighteen listed in the document, I won't go through all of those, but just to say that the main drive really would be for us to have an export campaign to amplify all messages, be that from the DIT, the Chamber, ourselves. We want to include case studies. I think there's no greater nudge than understanding what your peer business is doing down the road and understanding which markets they're entering, for you to think, actually, I can do it, you know, I can understand that opportunity for growth. We want to make sure that our businesses understand about the trade agreements that the government are making. How can we make sure that they understand what it means for them on the ground, how they can take advantage of it? Freeport opportunities, we've got two new freeports coming on board, the Humber Freeport and also the East Midlands Airport. How can we make sure that we take full advantage of these? How can we increase the trade that's coming through? And the final one is about peer network support, so how can we get our businesses to work together as a peer network, learn from each other? Quite a few years ago, we had an organisation called East Midlands Trade Association, and that worked really well. That network was very proactive, it supported the businesses. That seems to have ceased operation now, so we want to work with the Lincolnshire Chamber of Commerce to reinstall that peer network support and get that support available across all our businesses and our sectors moving forward. So I will now hand over to committee members to look at the considerations, look at the report, and ask whether you think it is an evidence-led based response to meet our needs in terms of international trade, and also happy to receive any comments and refinements to the documents enclosed.
Thank you very much. The first person I have, and the only person at the moment, is councillor Spratt.
Thank you. Well, I was quite enthusiastic about the last report, but I'm actually passionate about this one, if you don't mind me saying. I think, in a way, it follows on from the last report, in this sense, that we were talking about the free market and intervention. And I think it's this area, this facilitating role that the government, that the council can play to help facilitate business, particularly in these areas. And Lincolnshire is a big exporter and importer and a lot of fruit, and come to some of the specifics at the moment, and especially, I think, Mr Chairman, with us coming out of the EU. And I don't want to, I mean, I don't think perhaps we necessarily ought to trigger a debate as to whether it's right to come out of the EU or not, but we are where we are, and we need to make the best of it. And I think that the government putting in DTI, is it DIT or DTI, Department of International Trade or Department of Trade, anyway, whatever, putting people in and working with the council and getting this facilitating role, I think is an excellent method of intervention. Some specific points, and I'm not a businessperson, and so I don't know, I only know what I read about in the press and what I see on the TV. It strikes me that since we came out of the EU, for better or for worse, a lot of businesses are suffering from what I would describe as excessive bureaucracy, compared with what was there previously. And I notice in the report, page, I probably haven't, I don't think you necessarily need me to quote the page number, but sixty-three percent, I think it was, or thereabouts, of exports go to the EU. So I would specifically like to know if there has been any falloff, Chairman, in exports, perhaps because of the bureaucracy. We've all seen people on TV say, well, we're not bothering to ship to the EU now because of all the red tape. of all the red tape. And I just wonder if there's any evidence of that happening in Lincolnshire, because if there is, obviously that's what we need to do to try and help people to get over that, and obviously that's what this report sets out to do. So it was 63.37%. And I just wonder about, as well as trading with the EU, because we're supposed to have a free trade agreement, that's debatable, but what is the possibility of trading further afield? Obviously, 38, 30 something percent, 40 something percent, we trade outside the EU. What's the prospects for Lincolnshire, trading more outside the EU, bearing in mind what I've said about EU trade? So what can be done specifically to increase trade with the rest of the world? Because it strikes me, Chairman, that some of the Pacific Rim countries and some of the eastern countries, they seem to be, of course, we do need some regulation, but they seem to be a different mindset to trade. And I think a lot of the EU, it is very bureaucratic, and we see a minister in, I nearly said Moscow, thank God, in Washington, with all the paperwork that firms have to fill in. And I think this is supposed to be free trade, and actually, the standards of British produce, particularly food, is often higher than European standards are. And so I'd have a bit of a waffle, but as I say, I do really feel very strongly about this, and I want to congratulate the officers on putting this report together and giving some context to the international situation as it directly affects traders in Lincolnshire. That's all I've got to say at the moment, Chairman, but I might want to come back after councillor Baxter's spoken.
Thank you very much. Councillor Baxter.
Thank you, Chairman. I was going to mention Brexit as well, obviously, because I don't think you could look at this issue without thinking about the impact of Brexit, and the pandemic, and probably the war in Ukraine. I can't find, it might be I'm looking in the right place, a breakdown by sector. I can see a breakdown of where we're sending the goods within the EU, and I can see the figure that councillor Spratt referred to of a 63 to 37% split. And I can see where we think we're strong in terms of the agri-food sector and so on, but I can't see what we're exporting, nor where we're exporting it to. So I'd welcome some clarity over what is it we're sending? Are we sending flowers, or are we sending machines, or are we sending widgets? Where is our export market being produced? In terms of the 63, 37% split, it's interesting that we send two-thirds of what we export to the European Union. What do I need to think about it? Would it be better if it was half and half, or 90% and 10%? Surely if we're exporting it overseas, that's good for whoever it is that's producing it and exporting it. A lot of my thought about this subject is informed by, my daughter is an apprentice at a agriculture machinery manufacturing place in Deeping St James and Market Deeping, I'm pleased to say. And when I spoke to her employers about Brexit after the decision had just been made, they said Brexit, they didn't welcome Brexit, but on the other hand, they said, we're exporting all over the world, so we're used to paperwork, and we have a market, even if they shut the Channel Tunnel, we would still be able to export. So do we want to export? I suppose the answer to the question I've just asked is, if we export more of everything to the EU, or export more of everything, and the pie gets bigger, the amount of exports gets bigger, then we don't need to worry about where it's going, as long as we're getting the income for it. Unless it's all relying on the subsidised flights that pay no tax, as we mentioned earlier on, and councillor Spratt earlier on mentioned the people that can't afford to fly to Benidorm or whatever. It's not just people that go on aeroplanes, it's also stuff. And we bring loads of stuff from China, that we know we have issues about human rights in China. We bring stuff from all over the world, from the United States, from Canada. We bring stuff from New Zealand, some of which we also produce in the UK. And we bring flowers. We fly in flowers from South Africa and Holland and places, and I'm sure we probably also export flowers by flight. And that may be good for the economy, but environmentally, I'm going to say that's a bad thing. I don't know about the Valentine's Day market, the supermarkets would probably say on Valentine's Day it's a good thing, but generally speaking, importing cut flowers to Lincolnshire is a bad thing, and flying cut flowers anywhere is a bad thing. But again, we as a local authority can't do very much about it. Except that we can, as councillor Davy mentioned in his report, about favouring local markets, about favouring local procurement, a lot of the arguments around the solar farms which are proposed for Lincolnshire is about taking away agricultural land. Again, this is the free market. If that agricultural land was being used to produce tonnes of goods and money, the owners wouldn't be looking at it for generation of energy, to produce loads of energy and money. So what are we doing, as well as the international strategy, what are we doing as a county to improve our domestic markets too? Thank you, sorry if that was a bit rumbling, Chairman.
Not a problem. I'm not sure if it's the level of information you require, but page 178 and 183 has details about what it is we exactly export. So if not, feel free to terrorise the officers, I'm sure they'll provide great information for us. Just a little bit from me. I completely agree with everything councillor Spratt said. I think the role of the county council is to facilitate that trade, and I would imagine that for businesses at the minute, it's quite scary. We've just come out of a pandemic, the world's changed, we've had Brexit. If you've got a good that you think, well, there might be a demand the other side of the world, but how on earth do we do it? And yes, the government website is quite good, my students managed to find a way around it well enough, but it can be extremely scary if you've been doing something, you know, say you manufacture something, you've been doing that for years, you know that business inside and out, that's really easy. But when you're looking at new markets to take it to, that could be a really scary time. And not only that, but if you do it wrong, that could cause a downfall of a really settled business, or a business that's balancing on the edge. So I think that it's exactly right that the county do all we can to facilitate those companies getting the information they need, maybe getting the support, maybe, you know, it could just be guidance on how you fill these forms in, how not to fall foul of the taxman, things like that. You know, that's exactly the role that we should be fulfilling.
Do I have any more speakers? Yep. Councillor Clarke.
Just one point. What councillor Spratt said about exporting further than the EU, surely we want to be exporting to the nearest point, not the furthest, because if we do, won't that affect the carbon targets we're all setting ourselves?
I mean, I won't answer for the officers, but from my point of view, yes, but unfortunately, we're a public entity that are concerned with environmental targets, and businesses are concerned primarily with profit. So you're always going to have competing ideologies on that one. I don't think any business is going to say, we're going to sell that for half as much because it's slightly better for the environment, so. No more speakers? Anything further from the officers to address? Justin, you want to come in?
Yeah, two or three things. First of all, I think you hit the nail on the head when you talked about the leader of a manufacturing business who's good at manufacturing, not necessarily good at exporting. And that's where we want to provide the advice, is to those individuals. I think it's part of everything else we do in terms of economic growth, so this is not exclusive, so training, business support, inward investment, all the things we've spoken about previously, this needs to be seen as part of it. And I think the point councillor Spratt makes about growing the pie is absolutely critical. And when I first started work, goodness knows how long ago, I led a number of initiatives which were about focusing on different regions as a way of creating a step into certain regions. And that didn't work, because we couldn't book the market, we shouldn't be telling businesses what they should and shouldn't do. So actually, by providing that wraparound advice and providing the sort of support to avoid them stumbling over things, that's where I recommend we will get the biggest bang for our bucks. Thank you.
Any other officers want to come in? Sam.
Thank you. I was just going to come back to a couple of comments, that in terms of broadening businesses' horizons in terms of international trade, we see that if we amplify the messages from the trade agreements, that we can then actually open the businesses' eyes just to understand what countries we can start trading with more effectively, but also the benefits of doing that. So that's one element. Also, from the research, what we do see is that our businesses choose to trade with their nearest counterparts, or particularly English-speaking countries. So just to get their first footfall and foray into international trade before they embrace further markets. And in terms of the data, whilst we know that 48% of our exporting is predominantly manufacturing and transport, 20% is food and livestock, but in terms of food, it's cereals that they're trading. But we haven't got any further granular data, because that is retained by HMRC, and they won't give it us at that lower level when it's released. In terms of trade-in statistics post-Brexit, the data hasn't been released yet, but information from our international trade advisers do say that there was a slight dip, but it was only until people got to be au fait with the new paperwork requirements. And there's been a lot of support for businesses to actually navigate through that process, and now, once they've become familiar, it's started to ramp up again. So, but we haven't seen the final results to understand the impact of that.
Thank you very much. Okay, so following that, I move that the committee endorses the fantastic report. Sorry, councillor Spratt. Ah, fair enough. I'll come to you in one moment, councillor Spratt, and supports the action plan set out in the report, and asks that our comments from today's discussion are used to inform the action plan as recorded, and I'm assuming you're still happy to second that, councillor Spratt. Yeah, with option two, thank you for clarifying. All those in favour? That appears to be unanimous again, thank you very much. Okay, so that brings us on to the final item on the agenda, which is the Environment and Economy Scrutiny Committee Work Programme. This item is on pages 215 to 220 of the agenda pack, and enables the committee to comment on the content of its work programme. So I shall hand over to Kiara, who will present.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. So the item is correctly stated that it is on pages 215 to 220 of the agenda pack, and it allows you to view the work programme as this has been developed for the future months. There is a list of items to be programmed, and I would like to provide assurance to members of this committee that I'm working very closely with all officers in terms of bringing those items into future agendas. That concludes my update, thank you very much.
Any comments from members? Councillor Baxter.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the report. The meeting in July compared with the meeting in September looks quite light, or the September meeting looks heavy, whichever way you look at it. On the July, we've got the Quarterly Performance and Adult Education, whereas in September, we have got Household Waste Recycling, that we all have an opinion on, because we all have a bin. We have the Federal Thorp Geological Disposal Facility, aka the nuclear option, and I imagine that would be quite an interesting debate. And then Lincolnshire Tourism, again, we've all been to other parts of Lincolnshire, so we'll all have an opinion on that as well. So I wonder if it's, I wonder if the balance is right, and I wonder if any of them, I appreciate it creates work for officers, but I wonder if any of those issues could be brought forward to the earlier meeting? Thank you.
I just wanted to provide assurance that the work programme is indeed a leaving document, so it gets changed in terms of whenever we get notification that something is ready to come forward. It can be added, and it will be added. As you have correctly observed, the agenda in July is slightly lighter than usual. However, there are a series of activities planned, which will lead to several items potentially being added in the very near future agendas, but we wouldn't want to confirm anything at this stage until we are sure. And we have confirmed with officers that they are comfortable at bringing items to the committee. But thank you very much for the comment, and it is taken on.
Thank you very much, Kara. Any other comments? In that case, I move that we note the report and approve the existing work programme as detailed in 215 to 220, and obviously any items that come forward in the meantime. Do I have a second? Are we all agreed? Okay. Councillor, second all those in favour? Unanimous again, thank you very much. So that now concludes the formal business of the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance, and have a safe journey home.